Alright, are we ready?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting over. Now's the time for any concerned citizens to the council on an item that's not on the agenda. Is there anyone in their city hall?
No.
No, nobody in the audience? Well.
Mark?
You can't argue. God, it breaks me. Yeah, we're good, Matt.
Okay, then we'll go ahead. You want to give some items?
Both approve. I'll second.
Jackson? Is he on there?
Aye.
Okay. Sloan?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
And Zamali?
Aye.
All right, new business. I have a public hearing on plan specification and form of contract for bringing our animal shelter.
I think we need some clarification from Don Norris and maybe Bob on this.
Yeah, Bob, do you want to clarify what the bidding process is?
Okay, I'll be, I'll be in trouble then, Don, to speak some more. Um, the bids came in one last Thursday, or whatever, Don, and all the bids came in substantially higher than the investment, and then prepared by the architect. So, Don, you can maybe address just how high the bids came in and what the plan's going to be. We would go ahead with this public hearing on plan specs, but we probably aren't going to approve them just because the bids came in so high. We're also not going to consider awarding the contract because there isn't enough money donated to cover it. So, Don, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, the lowest bid out of five bids was $1,007,000, uh, which is, uh, I don't know what words to use for it, super disappointing, uh, more than super disappointing. We have to analyze why those bids came in so high. We have $634,000 to work with. Out of that $634,000 we have to work with, about $250,000 to $260,000 is for, um, equipment that goes in the building and for architect fees and hookups to electrical and so forth. So you really have about $375,000 left for the building itself. Uh, we knew we were going to have to raise a little bit more money. We anticipated the bids to come in between $450,000 and $550,000. Reason we expected that was because the exact same size building, just a little less than a year ago, exact same square footage, with the same style of building, was built for under $400,000. Now, we know we have all kinds of other, uh, animal, uh, things that have to be done to the building, which are different than a normal building, but even in considering that, I was hoping those things would be around the $100,000 extra figure. So hoping that the bid came in at no more than $500,000, but in that range. A million, $7,000 is what the bid is. So we have to sit down and analyze and say, why did that happen? What's happening here? Why is it so far off? Um, the first thing that has come to our attention is that on the lot, that we have figured where we wanted to put the building. Uh, we, we got a soil test back, the ground was not compacted hard enough, and we were going to have to take it off and then put it back and compact it where the building was. The architect figured that was going to be about $25,000 worth of work. Well, when we got the land given to us, still within reason to continue to think that we, that's where we should put it, because $25,000 is what a lot costs anywhere else, so we still thought we should be looking at what we were doing. One of the bidders has informed us that that particular item on all the all the bid was between $100,000 and $200,000 to correct the soil problem to build a building. We don't know why it's so much more than what we anticipated. It's something that the architects have got to try to find out, uh, from the actual bidders to see why it's so outrageously high compared to what was anticipated. The second thing that was outrageously high, that we know for a fact, was the HOVAC system, the, uh, heating and cooling system, which we wanted to make sure came in. The parry's came in $500,000. We didn't want that. We said we had to go away from that. We couldn't control the order like that. So we were anticipating that we would spend about $40,000 to do that. The bids on that came in all the way from $200,000 to $280,000 for that one item alone. So we're going back to the drawing board to see what we can do at our end with the architects to figure out what they were bidding that was so much higher than what we anticipated. Whether we have the spec drawn too tight, too hard, too something, that's one thing that we can help ourselves on. But even at that, $200,000 for the dirt work and $200,000 for the, uh, HOVAC system, if we can get it down to something reasonable, we're still over budget by quite a bit. Uh, so we asked some more questions about why this was. Uh, Greg Carey, who I had talked to about, he built, uh, Peter's veterinary building, and, uh, he didn't even bid on the building because he is so busy. The, after the duration went through and all the buildings that were knocked down from west to Carroll, through us, through all the way to the United States, evidently the metal building companies are just going wild building buildings. And their place where they can make the money is putting the building up. And if they have all kinds of farmers out there, whoever, who don't really care exactly how the building is built, just want a building put up to put some farm equipment in or whatever, it's easier for them to get involved with those things and build ten of them as compared to doing something as complicated as an animal shelter. So we think that, and we're still to find this out because we don't know for sure, we think that one of the major reasons is they are just so done gone busy that they can't possibly catch up. Another part of that is, this other building was built less than a year ago, but prices have gone up so much, we don't know what that factor is yet. So we have those things determined. The architects are going to work on determining those things to see what is reality with this bidding process, and what is reality with the type of building that we want to build. No matter what I look at in this, it's, it's all going to have to come together, and the only way that he wants to do this is he wants to rebid it in February or March. And the only reason we're thinking that is because Greg Carey gave us the information that when January and February hits, that all these guys that are so busy will not be busy anymore. It'll be winter, and they'll have time to bid it at a more reasonable level. How many of these things in combination are true? It's a good question. He pressed after we got the bids. I thought, how are we ever going to accomplish this? The reason I went to the metal building, the reason I made all the cuts, the reason I did all the order, not doing the order of work in the building, all those things were to get the building so that we could get it built, get it built at a price of between $450,000 and $550,000. I had people lined up, I think, who would have helped us, I don't know if it would have been enough, but would genuinely have helped us if we were short, at least in that range of money. But if it's not going to be in that range of money, I don't know what the road's reward is. I've worked in this for so long and so hard, and every single time I turn around, there's a major roadblock. This is a huge, major roadblock. I do not know what to do if we can't figure out how to get the price of this building to where we need to be. If there is, and if we cannot, and if there is not somebody to step forward to give a major portion of this money to finish this project, it is going to fail. I don't know how else to put it. I'll put the show, I'll boast all the burden of mine. Uh, I've worked as hard as, whether I know how to work. Uh, we have gotten great participation, especially this last winter, when I sent out a personal letter to every single person in the county. We got back an additional $170,000 to get at the $634,000 mark. Do I think there is a lot more out there? I don't think there's a lot of numbers of people out there who have a major amount of money to give to the project. If there is not a single person or some entity which is able to put up a major amount of money, if we can't get this building down to the price range, then we're going to fail. I have said from the very beginning, for everybody who has given me money for this project, I started in the project a little less than eight years ago. Octively started asking for money five years ago. If we cannot raise this money, we will return the money for those people who have given it to us. So if we cannot go over these obstacles and get beyond these obstacles by March or February or March of next year, and have it rebid and have it come in at a reasonable level, we are going to fail. I don't know what else to say. I know that I'm super disappointed. I just, I thought we really were going to get by this when I knew that there was a building that a year ago was built for under $400,000, which was the exact same square footage as what we want to put up. And yet we have all these obstacles, not little obstacles, a $600,000 obstacle sitting in our way. I'll take any questions.
I was going to add, maybe, uh, maybe Chad can get back up. Something what you're saying, it seems like, uh, in conversation with contractors around, that this seems right on par with expenses for, for almost everything right now. All the materials are going up and everything, so I was, I have to think that's a huge portion of it. Any insight on that, Chad?
Materials are, I mean, the number is almost double, you know, from what it was fifteen months ago. I can only imagine that the price of steel is, is one of the best, probably high demand, like you said, from the dirty show. Um, I, I, and the, 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 you know, with the overexhibition and having to back soil this. Um, I'm surprised that it's that much, but, you know, if that's, if that's what it is, so maybe if you needed a, a different site, I had, I'm, I tell those things, I would agree with, that they're, that, that's us.
I think the other thing too is, I'm very willing to move the site. There is no way we can spend $100,000 worth of dirt work. I mean, it does not make sense. We need to find a different lot that accommodates us. That probably means real honestly that we will not find a lot that is going to accommodate a dog park unless we're lucky. Uh, I intended, I would have a call into Sid Jones to see if there's any GCDC other land that's out there. Uh, another big expense that was in one of the bids was $80,000 to hook up the sewer and the water, because they had to come so far with the sewer and the water. So I'm very open to coming, coming to a different lot. I have looked, I have talked to, uh, Adam Smith at the assessor's office. He's very helpful in trying to point out any lot around town that would be accommodating to us. There's a couple of GCDC has out on Gallup Road, um, that would probably work for the shelter, and that's probably what we'll have to do and not have the animal park with it. And put an animal park somewhere else or even there, since we don't have to build a building. If we could put it still there, I don't know. But one thing for sure, I am willing to do anything it takes to get the price down there to get this thing accomplished. If that's what it takes to move it, that's what we'll do. I do have some real problems though with building anything close to the railroad tracks. We cannot do that, guys, because it is an animal facility. Every time a train would go by, you would just raise havoc. We have to keep it away from the train tracks. That's why I liked it out where it was, plus the fact that we have plenty of land to build an animal park in addition to that. Uh, a lot of the public wants the animal park. But to be very honest, the first thing on the list is the animal shelter itself. To get a building, replace it, put, needs to be replaced so desperately. Uh, so first things first, we have to have the animal shelter first. Uh, I don't know, it just, it just, uh, unless there's somebody who's going to step forward and do a monumental part of the fundraising, I mean, as far as giving us a large amount of money, uh, unless these things come into play, unless we can figure out a lot that's less, that has sewer and water already available and easily hooked up, if we can figure out a way to get the HOVAC system down to something that's reasonable, if we can get the sewer and, or the water, so forth, not to be $80,000 to get it hooked up. Uh, all those things have to come into play, and maybe it's not going to happen. Maybe the metal buildings, because there's just such a high demand, they could get what they want. Uh, I don't know. Uh, and again, like Chad says, uh, if you're going to build a lot of wood, if the wood's doubled in the last two months, um, and these guys know that they can't build a building till the middle of next year, or that's when they want to start, they're scared to death. They're just protecting themselves. They're worried that the price of wood's going to go up so much, the price of metal's going to go up so much. They can't lose money on it, so they have to bid it at a million dollars. I don't know where to go.
Was that building site, the building site? Was that fill soil back there that, uh, that was built up or was that undisturbed?
The soil that was on the, the soil that was on the, uh, actual, uh, lot was used, the dirt was moved to make the other, other, uh, lots level and soundable. And so they took the fill dirt out of there. Although there's plenty of dirt there, it's not a question that we don't have enough dirt.
I know.
Because the hill to the south is so tall, there is plenty of dirt there to do. It's just that it has to be moved. And it has to be repacked, because the soil test that we did said the dirt was good enough, but the packing was not tight enough, and that you had to remove four feet of the dirt, pack it, and then build it up to six feet higher.
That shouldn't cost that much. That shouldn't cost that much. Uh, yeah, my, my curiosity was, was that if that were fill soil, uh, what were the specifications that were required when they did the other fill and, and compacted that? But that's not the case here, so. But that, that's not a lot, that's not a lot of dirt to move either for $100,000 or $200,000.
Yeah, I know, I noticed on the school, when the school built their project, um, they actually had a big figure in for what it was going to cost them to do all the dirt work out there at the new school. And it came in lower by $250,000 or something than what they anticipated. So that was just the opposite of what we got going on here.
Yeah, I think, no, no, somebody needs to look into that a little deeper, because that, that sounds to me like there's probably, definitely some room there to save some money. Because you're not talking about a very big footprint with this building. And that's what you need to search for.
Two thousand six hundred feet, not a very big footprint, is right.
Yeah.
Yes. I guess the problems that I see are that, um, even with maybe bringing things down and, um, doing all the right things and all of that and raising money, I think that it just seems like it'll still be a couple hundred thousand short. But when you look at the present animal shelter, that is untenable. So I think, um, you know, as sort of managers of a city and things like that, we're going to have to think of some stuff too, maybe. But that, you're right, Don, I'm sorry that that, boy, this is disappointing.
If I, if I could see it, if all these things go into place, and I could see an end game, fine. But if I can't see an end game to this, if there is no solution to raising this kind of money to build this, then I'm obligated to give the money back to the people who tried to raise it in the beginning. So I'm obligated to do that. I told them I would do that. If we didn't raise enough money to build an empty shelter, then I would give the money back. I've already spent some of the money on an architect, so they're not going to get a hundred percent of it back. But I, I'm going to do my best to give it all back to those people if we cannot make this an end game, if we cannot get a building built with an animal shelter.
Did the architect seem hopeful or very pessimistic about maybe getting some things reasonable again?
I, I think his thought process was that we would attack everything that I've talked about, a different lot, a different HOVAC system, uh, anything in the, in, at all in the world of the building that we could think of, which we've already tried to do all the way, but even make it even finer and get it right down to the nth degree. If all of those things are done, if you can find a sewer and water that's easier to hook up on another place, it doesn't cost us $80,000. There's $80,000. If we get all of those things to go, and February or March, we bid it again, and it comes in way too high again, then I don't see an end game, unless between now and March, someone steps forward with a big chunk of money.
Don, what are your time limits on some of the money you have? Do you have it? I, we talked about it before, I don't recall off the top of my head if there was, uh, a deadline on spending a certain amount of your awarded money.
Uh, the biggest one is the Department of Agriculture. They would give us $34,000. I, I checked with them just, uh, before we started on the metal building process to see how much time we had left. We've used up one year of the time, but we have a total of three years to use it in, as long as we show progress on what we're trying to accomplish. Now, that particular Department of Agriculture, $34,000 grant was one for equipment only. I could not use it for the building. It had to be for equipment. Well, we don't have a problem there because we have plenty of equipment to buy, so that is not a problem. But the only way you get to $34,000 is to have a receipt for the equipment in your hand and give it to them. So you have to buy the equipment, get the receipt, and give it to them before you're going to get that money back.
I was also going to ask you, at, at what point do you decide? When, uh, when, when an animal, or dog park, um, happens? I mean, is it, you're going to have the building completed? You're going to have, are you going to hold off on that so you know you have every penny you need to put into the building? Or regardless of the building, you have a certain percent that goes to the dog park? Um, does that make sense?
Yeah, no, we would put everything toward the, the actual animal facility, the building first. Whatever is left over would go to dog park later. Uh, that's the plan. Now, the Rotary is committed to, uh, give us $50,000 to help for the dog park. And the dog park itself, just to give you an idea, the whole thing runs about $103,000 for the dog park. However, the dog park's main two components is the fence itself, uh, and, and some walking paths or grass eating and so forth. That can be done for about $53,000, the fence and the grass and so forth. Um, so those two things could still be done for a dog park. You could still have a dog park, but you'd still need a lot more work to done, do the dog park other than the fence and some grass eating.
So are you open to having a dog park, um, in an alternative area as well? I mean, regardless of where the shelter would be?
Well, yeah, I, I, I think probably the same thing is here. It depends on GCDC. GC, GCDC gave us this land to build an animal shelter and a dog park. Now, if they're not okay with us moving the building to a different place and having the animal dog park there, then it's their, their choice, because I told them we were going to put an animal shelter and a dog park there. Now, all of a sudden, if I move the animal shelter to a different location, then that's up to them, or they still want to give us this land to build just a dog park on it.
Could, um, yeah, I had someone ask, could we, could we utilize the current site to put a new animal shelter on?
The site we're talking about now, that just, we just talked about, you mean?
No, sorry, where, where the existing animal shelter is by the wastewater treatment plant.
That's going to be taken up by wastewater, uh, upgrade.
Yeah, that, that's going to be taken up by the wastewater expansion of the innovation.
Yeah, maybe all of that.
There's, there's a little caveat to that one.
Say that, say that again, I'm sorry.
When we, with the new wastewater expansion that we're going to have to do, they're, they're going to need that area where the animal shelter and the park is now.
Gotcha, okay. Good enough. Even if that weren't true, you know, the animals that are currently in the animal shelter would have to be somewhere while one thing's being torn down and another thing's being built.
Right, right. Yeah, I would take any information that you might give me as far as a, a different location. The locations that I scouted with Adam Smith were, uh, GC, GCDC right next to where they, where, uh, Mark Peters built his veterinary building. There's a lot right next to that. There's actually two lots right next to that. Uh, but that's kind of private, probably want to sell it to us, but still, if it was $25,000, it wouldn't be $200,000 as far as dirt work is concerned. Um, and, uh, the only other place that I can possibly think of, but I don't think is probably available, is, you know, where the county is buying the, the, um, electrical plant from. Uh, they haven't got a plan to put on a jail out there somewhere in the future. There's a lot of land out there, more than probably what they need for both those things. And I don't, but I don't know if they want to park with that, or they're not maybe far along enough as their process to know what they've got going on.
So right now, $500,000 over anticipation is, you know, obviously not going to work. If in February or March bids come in, and they, let's just say, they're probably going to be higher than, than what we want them to, higher than $500,000, but what would be the number that you would think, well, then this just isn't going to work?
Well, I think, I think anything over $550,000, we're going to, I mean, I, I think we could, we have $375,000 after we have all the other things that have to be put in it. So we only have $375,000 for the building. I figured we could raise to $550,000. I figured we can raise $180,000 more. But I do not think it's possible to raise more than that. I, I, I think we have already tapped out the main things unless somebody steps forward. But let's remember, we've been, I've been working on this for eight years.
Eight?
Five, the last five years, constantly asking for a single person to step forward and help us do this. And it has not happened. So do I think it would happen now? I'm doubtful.
Right.
Does this solve any of your problem? I was here to solve that problem, but it's not solving the problem.
Hopefully there, you know, the press is covering this, and maybe, you know, it's not going to solve everything. not going to solve everything, but I mean, this is maybe, once again, where the city, the citizens of Jefferson tell us, maybe guide us a little bit too.
Is there any other questions you have for me? I'll investigate all those things. My, my tactic is to go back to the architect, to slice and dice as much as we can, to make sure the furnace gets down to a reasonable level, um, and then have it re-bid in February and March. And if they, if they come in like they are now, I don't see an endgame.
Any more questions for Don? If we don't, it appropriate just to do a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close, close the public hearing. Second.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Semolik?
Aye.
Hey, hey, Mr. Don, thank you for all you do, your work. Sorry, that's, uh, kind of a gap. Sorry. Thank you, though. Keep at it. No, man, I think there's, there's very little choices at this point. I'll make all the choices where I rightfully can to try to get it done. Uh, check with Sid Jones about the GCDC land available and whether he's willing to sell one of those to us at a decent price. And, uh, then I'll go back to the architect to make sure that we have got absolutely everything off there that we possibly can. We're also gonna go back to the bidders and ask them why things were so expensive, what part of it is so expensive, to see if there's something we can do about it. If there isn't anything we can do about it, I think we still wanna bet it one last time to find out, uh, if it's really there, or if people were just so busy, they couldn't even, they just threw a bid out there thinking, well, if they give us this much money, we'll make good money at it. I mean, there's one thing that might be happening, but, uh, if that's not what's happening, then we have some real challenges. Thank you, man.
You bet. Thank you.
All right. Bob, do we need to go through item B but not C? Yeah, as to item D, there's, I mean, I would say you just take no action on that because there's no point in approving plans that just aren't gonna work, so. Sure. Next to item C, I think it probably would be appropriate that someone just do the motion that you're, you know, declining all bids because you're not gonna accept any of them because, I assume the architect is owing some, uh, losses from those contractors. And so, we probably need to take, uh, the action of, uh, telling them that you're not gonna accept any of the contracts they could return those.
I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion. Second.
Semolik?
Aye.
Weetrick? Weetrick?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
And Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
All right, item D, consider second reading of ordinance providing for commercial cardboard collection deeds.
Haven't heard anything.
We have, we've had a few questions back, back out.
Yeah, but they just aren't gonna use the, use it, but.
That was expected.
That they're not gonna use?
Just a few of them, yeah. If someone said, take me off the list or come pick my dumpster up, yeah.
Maybe small users were?
Yeah, pretty.
No consequence to him to put it in the?
Probably.
Normal bourbon.
Because, no, no, you know, the small users are a couple.
But other than that? I just had someone say that they'll, will take it themselves, just easy for the small amount they have. So, makes sense.
I'll make, I'll make, I'll make a motion. We, uh, close second reading. Second.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Semolik?
Aye.
Item A, consider approval of change order number two for one hundred each State Street or seven thousand fifteen dollars.
It's in your packet as far as the, uh, what the change order was for. These were a couple of change orders, uh, that, one of them was for the, uh, for some roofing material to cap, and the other one was for an access hole up to, up to the roof. Um, Nick and I talked about those two items when, when he was still here.
I'll, I'll make, I'll make a motion. Will you approve that?
I'll second. Weetrick?
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Semolik?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Item F, consider approval of pay estimate number five for one hundred each State Street of forty-five thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars and twenty cents.
As you can see on the attached pay estimate, um, that brings us down about a little under twelve thousand dollars total that we're gonna have left to pay on this project. So, once this, this roof is done, we can start the process of hopefully turning this building over to a new owner.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Semolik?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item G, consider approval to submit wastewater facility plan and intended use plan application to DNR.
So, um, as, as part of this process, uh, for, uh, meeting the nutrient reduction, uh, strategy that was put together a couple of years ago, uh, there needs to be improvements at the wastewater plant. Um, the first step in that process is to complete the wastewater treatment facility report. Um, that needs to be submitted to the, uh, DNR for their review. They look at the processes that we're proposing, the improvements we're proposing, and then they basically sign off on that. Um, so this is the first part of that step. Once we get approval back from them, we'll move forward with design and construction. The end result is trying to have the facility, um, operational and meeting the new, uh, discharge limits for the, uh, MPDS permit by, uh, June of twenty twenty-four. Um, the, uh, application for the intended use plan is, uh, basically a, a step in the process to be able to, uh, utilize the state revolving funds, the SRF loan funds. Um, if you don't, if you're not on the intended use plan with the DNR, you cannot apply for, uh, funding with SRF. So, this application is just making sure that, uh, the SRF funds are one of the, uh, an option as far as the, one of the funding sources that we can use.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Semolik?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item H, consider approval of proposal with KG Roofing for replacement of City Hall roof due to storm damage.
Uh, you'd like me to comment on that?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm, I was able to work with the, uh, insurance adjuster to determine that there was, uh, wind damage down to the City Hall roof, you know, from the drainage. Um, I got four bids that was, I believe, submitted into insurance, and two of those were in line with, um, the insurance estimate. And, um, of those two, I guess we determined it was, it was the lower one, was KG Roofing, and thought that would be the, uh, best choice of the bids to go with. And, so it should be completely covered, uh, by insurance funds. And that's just the City Hall roof, that's not a fire department roof.
Chad, where are they from?
Uh, Fort Lynch. And he told me he should be able to get to it here this year.
I move we approve.
I'll second.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Semolik?
Aye.
Item I, consider resolution approving agreement for acquisition of property at seven oh three North Wilson.
Okay, so I, um, I reached out to the owners of this property about, uh, considering giving us the, the city this property. It was, um, it's been a nuisance property for quite some time, is my understanding. And, um, there was somebody else interested in buying on contract, and I felt it would be best for the city if we could take possession of this property and get it torn down.
What will we use the property for after we tear it down? Is this the one right up by the railroad tracks?
Um, it is. So, there's some notes I had in a file at this point, um, that if we were able to acquire this property, there would be a, a neighbor might be interested in it. It's really not probably anything that we would build on, um, just get, getting rid of the nuisance.
This is that house right up by the railroad tracks?
Yeah, there's a.
Yeah.
Glass ceiling now and the house, and, uh, everything's about to, to fall in.
The classroom's there.
Yeah, I, I would move to, uh, approve that.
Second.
Jackson?
Yeah.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Semolik?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Item J, consider resolution accepting completed construction and approving final payment for Arch Alley Improvement Project.
Jim, is that you or me?
Uh, I can take it if you'd like, or you can?
That's fine. I mean, Jim, this, this project has, has reported or certified to the cities that that contract has been completed, and it complies with its terms. And so, this would just be the act of the city formally accepting it, and that starts, there's a thirty day period that has to be observed before you can release your retainage, which is about five percent of the total contract amount. So, I'd recommend you just, uh, move the adoption of that resolution, accepting that construction and approving final payment after the thirty days is run.
Yep, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say that the, the final pay request is, is part of this, and that is, uh, pay request number three. The release of retainage is for one thousand seven hundred and five dollars and eighty-four cents. So, that would be, that would be what would be released at the end of the thirty days.
All right. I'll leave that present.
I'll second.
Semolik?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item K, consider resolution accepting completed construction and approving final payment for Chestnut and Adams Street Water Main Project.
So, thanks for that project. Uh, Jim has reported that it's completed, so you would be recognizing that and accepting it, authorizing release of retainage at the end of thirty days. That retainage, Jim, is what, eleven thousand, one, nine, six dollars?
Eighty cents, yes.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Jackson?
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Semolik?
Aye.
Item L, consider resolution authorizing loan to tax increment revenue fund.
Each year, about by December one, the city certifies to the county auditor the amount that it estimates will be needed for TIF projects in the fiscal year that begins the following July one. The amount of certified has to be represented by a debt, so that can be your tax rebate payments that are already in place. You have a bond issue that you're servicing with test money that's already in place. And, but then as to all these downtown building improvements that you've done, surely there's no debt incurred for some events, events for using money from your general fund. So, the purpose of this resolution is just to recognize that you're making a loan to the general fund to be your tax increment revenue fund. The amount is the seven, one million seven hundred twenty thousand dollars. Now, this would be kind of a temporary thing after the first of the year. I think Mike could go explore with the council the idea of going to an outside lender that would sort of refinance this internal loan. So, but apparently it would just be a resolution to, you know, authorize that loan. That then gets the city of basis to certify the county auditor. Any questions on that? Is that just confusing everyone?
Uh, yeah, I think the resolution we're looking at now is just to, uh, uh, set up the approval to, for, for the city to establish this and borrow from itself at this time.
Borrow from ourselves essentially, now we're establishing a debt.
Right, that's, which, which is part of the, which is part of the TIF rules. So, I, I would move to approve that resolution. Second.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Semolik?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Mike, are we gonna have an update from Main Street Chamber?
Yeah, I don't know. I can't say Jamie Dobbs whenever he's on.
Yep, hello, everybody. Uh, so, uh, yeah, normally we would've had a quarterly update with the, the Main Street Chamber piece, um, but just to kind of do some of the restrictions. Uh, we're not gonna be having that for tonight, but did include, uh, kind of our action plan for twenty twenty-one. Um, and right now, we're still in the process of, um, finalizing everything with the merger, uh, that did happen earlier, but now it's kind of more on the legal side of things, which will kind of wrap up and close, uh, end of this year. Um, so the fundraising piece that historically Main Street, uh, has done, uh, kind of year in, so we're just starting to kick that off right now. So, again, that'll be one fundraising ask, uh, that we have, uh, normally had two different ones with Main Street and Chamber, but that'll be now combined together, uh, to make it more clear for everybody. So, um, just kind of more, uh, here tonight to answer if there's any questions that anybody has. Um, otherwise, uh, you know, kind of next quarter, we plan to, to be more in-person, be able to talk and present to you guys. So, any questions that I can answer based on what's in the packet? Uh, if not, again, appreciate, um, city support on, on the program, especially as this year, as we, um, merge the two together and, and feel that'll be a much, uh, stronger organization as, as we move through the end of this year and into twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Jamie. Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you. We'll move on to reports. Jim, do you have anything?
Uh, yes, uh, Caliber Concrete has, um, finished up the, uh, phase three portion, that's the East Lincoln Way portion of the, uh, Trailers project. Uh, they got all concrete put in and everything cleaned up and backfilled. Uh, so they have moved offsite for the rest of the winter, um, probably. of the winter. Um, probably looking at starting in Dobbin Deck in the spring. Um, the runway project is still done for the winter. That'll be starting up in the spring. Um, as I said earlier, the, the wastewater treatment plant project, you know, we're submitting that, uh, facility plan by December first. And, uh, the, we're, we got, uh, surveys scheduled for the alley project and for the West Lincoln Way project. Um, I think we'll be, we'll be keeping an eye on that West Lincoln Way project since we wanted to have a, a large component of that was going to be public meetings and such like that, that, um, we'll have to monitor how this, uh, pandemic stuff is gonna affect that and, um, see what we do with the schedule there, just to make sure that we're giving everybody opportunity to, to voice some opinions on it. So, um, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Roxanne?
No report.
Bob?
No report.
Mike?
Um, just to let people know that we, uh, for the administrative assistant, accountant, clerk, um, we are extending that advertising for another several weeks, I believe till December eleventh for applications. That's it.
Thank you. All right, Chad, do you have anything further? Chad?
Yeah, um, Portos Thirty State, um, hopes that, um, that property will be torn down yet this year, or maybe the first for next year. I've been working on, or talking with the owner of that property about getting it torn down.
All right. Is Mark there?
No report.
He said no report.
Thank you. How about Dave Moreland?
No Dave Moreland.
Okay. All right, Eric?
No report.
Matt?
Had a Park and Rec meeting recently. Few things to update folks on that, I would say. Would be the, um, current policy with school being, uh, remote learning is, for one, they have internet available for folks to use. Um, however, they're not allowing kids under eighteen to be there unless they have an adult with them. So that's a little bit different than the number right now. Um, also, uh, Sammy Lang has put in his letter resignation, so they're looking to fill that position perhaps with actually two part-time positions. Uh, so he's kind of been doing his, his job plus the, uh, swimming, swimming pool, uh, in the summers. And so looking at potentially doing two part-time jobs for that. So that job, he posted, uh, jobs, uh, may post it here shortly, maybe. And then, uh, also, and you'll think, anybody can correct me if I mispronounce his name wrong, uh, but if folks are aware, there's a, a trust that, uh, has awarded to, uh, representatives, uh, eight hundred forty-five, uh, over eight hundred forty-five thousand dollars. The Rory, uh, Luscher is in Baton Rouge?
Baton Rouge.
Okay. Um, so, um, uh, we formed a subcommittee to kind of explore how that money's going to be used. Um, we, we believe it's mostly to be used at the rec center itself. Uh, we're kind of, and maybe Mike has any more clarification on that. But anyway, we're, we're looking to, to see how that could be used. Uh, probably looking at ways we can put some of that money, uh, aside for, to, to invest it and continue give back to the rec center, uh, and invest some of it. Uh, it's something in the infrastructure, uh, at the sky's limit, uh, as far as ideas go. So we're gonna be reaching out, talking with folks around the community, and certainly if folks have ideas for the community, we, uh, open to anything right now to, to, uh, to contribute to the grant. So, Mike, do you have anything else on, on that trust?
Have you talked to Jim Dobbin Dick, uh, Matt on the possibilities? He brought something up with, uh, the GCDC meeting. Uh, if you have a talk, you might visit with him. He's, he's got some ideas too.
Great, thank you. That's, that's all I had. Does Mike have anything else to, um, say about that trust? Which probably not right now, but?
No, not right now. If you guys are on the right track, just to form that committee.
Yep. That's it for me.
All right. You think? You? Darren?
No report.
So, all right, my voice cut out, Pat?
No report.
Dave?
Uh, just water sewer. Um, we've pretty much just went over a lot of their, their budget requests for next year. Uh, they really don't have a whole lot. The, Dave Moreland's looking at maybe some dump boxes for some dump trucks. I think, uh, sewage wanted a, a grinder pump put out by the casino. Um, and then we discussed the, uh, emergencies, emergency sewer plan that Jim talked about earlier. And that was about it.
Okay. And I have no report. So we are certain. Thank you. All right, everybody. Night. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.